I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star Ledger newspapers, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. May I have roll call, please?
Mrs. Burke?
Here.
Mrs. Dye?
Here.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Here.
Mr. Mandela?
Here.
And Mr. Secala?
Here. Good evening, everyone. Welcome back.
Good evening.
Yeah.
Mr. Fetterman? Ms. Tavonier? We're excited for what we hope is going to be a very exciting school year, so let's get the show on the road. I'm assuming, Mrs. Dye, we don't have any committee reports since there have been no committee meetings this summer?
Not yet. Stay tuned for another two weeks. The only thing I wanted to mention is that, as most of you know, I'm running for reelection to the board, and I've really enjoyed my last three years working with everybody. I think we've gotten a lot accomplished as a team, and I hope I'm given the opportunity to work with all of you the next three years and continue the work we started.
Good.
Same here.
Okay.
And there'll be lots of committee reports in two weeks.
Excellent. We know that.
Lots of them.
Okay, actually, we don't have any board presentations this evening?
I was being kind.
Very good. Thank you so much. I do note that we will have a superintendent's report this night, right?
You do, however.
Yes, you do. Okay. So let's get along on the agenda. From the Office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary, under minutes, may I have a motion for B-1 through B-4? B-1 is a motion to approve the public and executive minutes of July 28, 2014. B-2 is a motion to approve the budgetary transfers for the month of July 2014. B-3 is a motion to approve the treasures report for the month of June 30, 2014. And B-4 is a motion to approve the board secretary certification to the board that no line item account has encumbrances or expenditures which exceed the line item appropriation in violation of the administrative code. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mr. Secala?
Yes. Under bills, may I have a motion for B-5, which is a motion to pay the list of bills that appear in our packet for August 26, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mr. Secala?
Yes. I forgot to ask if there's any discussion on any of those items. I assume that there's not, since nobody stopped me. I'm like a train just rolling.
I know. You're like rolling.
But those are just normal stuff, so we're okay there.
Under business, may I have a motion for B-6 through B-13? B-6 is a resolution, which I am not going to read into the record. It appears in the agenda, but it is a resolution regarding paperwork that needs to be filed with regard to the companies that we use for bonding. And basically, the bottom line is that we're authorizing the business administrator to execute and deliver any and all documents and instruments to the appropriate authorities regarding those bonds. It having been appeared, it appearing that it was possible that the bonding companies themselves, to no fault of us, did not submit the proper paperwork. So we're authorizing the board secretary to submit that paperwork and basically skip over the bonding company so that we're all, all our paperwork is in the right place. So that's what the B-6 is. B-7 is a motion to approve Bridgetta Stone &amp; Tile to supply 2,700 pieces of 4x4 wall tile and 158 pieces of 4x4 bullnose tile at the cost set forth therein, and that's for the South End School. B-8 is a motion to approve Sunnyfield Corporation's payment application regarding the South End Boiler Project. B-9 is a motion to approve the disposal of the computer items that are listed in that motion. B-10 is a motion to approve J&amp;B General Contractors to remove and replace 50 linear feet of concrete curb at the middle school. B-11 is a motion to approve MTM Corporation's payment application in the amount of $22,025 for asbestos abatement at LRP. B-12 is a motion to approve MTM Corporation payment application number one in the amount of $43,010 for asbestos abatement at South End. And B-13 is a motion to approve Sharp Entertainment, their use of the Cedar Grove High School Gym for film shoot on August 30, and they will be paying a usage fee of $1,500. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, may I have roll call, please?
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mr. Secala?
Yes.
And the filming's on the 30th. That's Saturday, right? So there's no practice.
Right. You had your chance for discussion.
Even said something ahead of time.
From the Office of the Superintendent, we have our superintendent's report. Mr. Fetterman, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Secala. Members of the Board of Education, good evening.
Good evening.
Members of the public, thanks for joining us. Good evening, everyone. It's been an exciting summer, to say the least, and I'd like to provide you with just a brief update on personnel and facilities in particular. Welcome back. As a reminder for students out there listening, school begins Wednesday, September 3. We hope to see you bright-eyed and bushy-tailed. Looking forward to getting started. Looking forward to seeing all of you as well. Also, another reminder, on September 9, our next board meeting, we will be performing goal-setting and ethics training for the board, so if you're so inclined to come on down for our next meeting, by all means, feel free. And yes, your friendly reminder that the Friday Folder is your source for all school and community knows, so check it out. In all seriousness, that Friday Folder, I think, is doing well, and it provides you with really everything from A to Z about each of our schools, so please check it out on a regular basis. We send that email right home to you, so open it up.
Open it up.
Check it out. I am compelled to provide you our HIB self-assessment grades, as per the law. What'll happen here is I'll provide you with our self-assessment scores, and at a future board meeting, I will provide you with how the DOE scores us in the same. At North End, we scored 59 out of 78. South End, 59 out of 78. Memorial Middle School, 67 out of 78. And at the high school, 60 out of 78. I'd like to mention it's worth noting that an average score of 52 is roughly equivalent to, quote, "meeting the standards," because there are 26 of them of equal weight, and you're scoring on a scale of 0 through 3, with 2 being "meeting the standard." So again, our totals range from 59 to 60, well above 52. Yes, there's room for improvement. I agree. You know, we're not at 75, 78s, and we know that. We acknowledge that. Our work's not done in that area, so if you're paying attention, stay tuned. We'll continue to provide you with what we're doing relative to HIB. How about a programming and curriculum update? Relative to CUSAC, the Quality Continuum, that the county runs to evaluate how we're performing here in a variety of standards, we are currently developing a district improvement plan. The state has asked that we submit that by October 1, and that is complete. Our long-term plan relative to our K-4 Common Core alignment is due November 1. Just so that you know, we are currently implementing the strategies outlined in that plan that I will be delivering to you in the coming weeks. The final Good Habits, Great Readers, if you may recall, that's our new Common Core-Aligned Literacy Series. The workshop was held on August 13. Nearly all of our North End and South End teachers attended. We had a great time getting back together, dusting off some of the summer sun, and really rolling up our sleeves and digging into the new literacy series. We also spent the morning going through the resources and strategizing how to blend the Daily Five, which will be the structure that you'll see going on in our classrooms, which relates to Read to Self, Read to Someone, listen to reading, word work, and work with writing. So basically, you'll go into a Language Arts Grade II classroom, and you'll see these workstations, if you will, five of them, and each of those stations will be activities related to Read to Self, Read to Someone, et cetera. We're excited. The teachers are trained. It's going to take us to the next level. In conjunction with that, we're incorporating the CAFE, which stands for Comprehension, Accuracy, Fluency, and Expression. So taking together the Daily Five, the CAFE assessments, and the new literacy series entitled Good Habits, Great Readers is really the next step for us. So we're all excited. We're charged up. It really marries what we're trying to do relative to student achievement and the Common Core. We couldn't be more excited about it. Let's talk about some district-wide updates. New personnel. We hired a new IT technician, Angel Perez. He started August 18. Angel, you're in the back. Give us a nice big wave back there. Angel's an experienced IT technician, and has hit the ground running. We look forward to his many contributions. Facilities district-wide, as you just heard, the asbestos abatement project at LRP has been complete. Not only was it important to remove the asbestos in those floor tiles, but we have new carpet tile in the hallways and in a large portion of our business offices. Again, stop by, say hello, check it out. How about at the high school? New personnel. The list is long. We've had a busy and exciting summer, looking for the best and brightest to join our team, and here they are. English teacher, Charlotte Gaviria. New math teacher, Sean Sweeney. New business teacher, Michael Christador. New history teacher, Jessica Del Vecchio. She's also coaching our JV volleyball program. How about a new PE health teacher, TJ Jones? He'll be coaching boys' JV basketball. We have a biology leave replacement, Mr. Greg Mayer. And our new paraprofessional is Antonette Cusimano. Welcome, one and all, to the high school. How about facility updates at the high school? Mr. Mangili has really done some great things there. I can't begin in the time that I have tonight to tell you how excited we are for his enthusiasm and the things that he's dedicating our resources to accomplishing, not the least of which was painting the lockers in the upper B wing. You know, the kids will be thrilled. I know the staff's already excited about it. Again, check it out. Stop by. We refreshed the boys' team room. We threw some paint on the lockers and on the floor. Looks great. A much-needed facelift. How about a new door installation at the media center, which brought our capacity up to 163 persons? Why is that important? Again, with park assessments coming on board, it was critical that we had a large staging area where we can have less disruption to the instructional process in our other classrooms, and we can sort of centralize the assessment location. We painted various rooms at the high school, the athletic office, child study team office, various specialized classrooms and English room, and other targeted hallway spaces. And the grounds look fantastic, from keeping the grass in order, new mulch beds, flower beds. Our guys have really done a nice job. Middle school, new personnel. We have a new social worker, Colleen Bulger. New Language Arts Grade 5 teacher, Kelly Schlosser. Maternity leave for Mrs. Lyons will be Kristi Torcia. And a new part-time secretary, Lisa Williams. Again, welcome, one and all. We're excited. Memorial Middle School is polished like a gem. I have to tell you, that school looks great. We did do some repair work out front. We had some concrete curb damage. Not like we didn't have any salt being thrown out there this year, so the salt had eroded away some of the concrete curbage, and likewise, portions of the front walkway. So that's repaired. It looks great. South End, some new personnel down there as well. We welcome in the resource room, Victoria DiGeralamo. Victoria served as a maternity replacement for us last year, so we're thrilled to have been able to sign her to a tenure-track, full-time position. She's terrific. We have a new position created called an Intervention Specialist. That'll be filled by Mimi Stitzer. She'll spend half of her time at South End, the other half at North End. The Intervention Specialist will focus on intervention strategies for K-1 and 2, and we're excited to be able to capture, you know, our youngest students in the greatest need. We have a couple of few maternity leave replacements. We have Michelle Howard, serving for Placenti for the first few months. Wendy Santa Venier, we welcome her, who will cover Mrs. Holmberg. And Wendy will also tag on to Holmberg's leave replacement by covering Mrs. Coots. Again, welcome Wendy, Michelle, and Mimi and Victoria. The facilities at South End, you know, have come a long way. We replaced the boiler. We abated a whole lot of asbestos wrapped around some of our piping there. We had new floor tiles installed at several locations, as well as along the hallway walls. It's an expensive project. It's costing more than we had anticipated, as the damage was worse than we had thought. But at the end of the day, it's the right thing to do. It's much safer, clean, looks better. Last but not least, North End. We have some new personnel there as well. New resource room teacher, Merrill Burley. She served last year as a personal aide and prior to that as a maternity leave. We're excited to have Merrill onboard again as a tenure-track, full-time teacher. Way to go, Merrill. Again, I mentioned Mimi. Maternity leave, Mrs. Daniele will be covered by Kristen Arluna. She also served in the past as a returning leave replacement. She does a great job for us. And Mrs. Rigo, on maternity leave, will be covered by Marie Lasher. She served at the middle school this year and did an admirable job. The facilities at North End also had some tile work completed. We're here. It looks great. We're excited. Looking forward to seeing all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fetterman.
You're welcome.
You have any comments, questions about the superintendent's report? Moving along. Under personnel, may I have a motion for S-1? We have a lot of items here through S-36. S-1 is a motion to approve the superintendent's report. S-2 is a motion to approve the submission of the HIB self-assessment grades. S-3 is a motion to approve the contract of Renee Tavonier, our business administrator and board secretary, as set forth therein. S-4 is a motion to approve Jessica Del Vecchio as Cedar Grove High School history teacher for the salary set forth therein. S-5 is a motion to accept the resignation of Jamie Petrucci and then as Resource Center teacher, effective July 30, 2014. S-6 is a motion to rescind Victoria DiGeralamo as a South End Grade 1 maternity leave teacher. S-7 is a motion to rescind Victoria DiGeralamo as a South End Grade 1 maternity leave teacher for different dates. Sorry, on S-6, it was from September 1 through October 7, and on S-7, it's from October 22, 2014 to June 19, 2015. And then S-8 approves Victoria DiGeralamo for her new position, which will be South End School Resource Teacher at the salary and step as set forth therein. That's effective September 1. S-9 is a motion to approve Wendy Santa Venier as South End Grade 4 maternity leave teacher at the salary set forth therein from September 1 through October 7, 2014. And S-10 is a motion to approve Wendy Santa Venier, South End School Grade 1 maternity leave teacher at the salary set forth therein, prorated from October 22 to June 19, 2015. S-11 is a motion to approve Michelle Howard, South End School Grade 3 maternity leave teacher, at the step set forth therein from September 1 through December 23, 2014. S-12 is a motion to rescind Kelly Schlosser as the MMS Grade 5 maternity leave teacher. And S-13 is a motion to approve Kelly Schlosser as the MMS Grade 5 Language Arts teacher, effective September 2, 2014, at the salary set forth therein. S-14 is a motion to approve Kristi Torcia as Memorial Middle School Grade 5 Language Arts teacher, effective September 2 through December 16, 2014, at the salary set forth therein. S-15 is a motion to approve Mimi Stitzer, Intervention Specialist at North End and South End, at the salary set forth therein for this coming school year. S-16 is a motion to appoint the staff as set forth in S-16. And I'll run through them quickly. Angel Perez as the district computer technician, Justin Carazza as the boys' assistant coach, Jessica Del Vecchio as the girls' JV volleyball coach, Antonette Cusimano as paraprofessional, Wendy Hendricks-Ruddy as paraprofessional, Michael Christador as per deum substitute at the high school, and finally, Greg Meyer, per deum substitute at the high school, and all their salaries and stipends are set forth in those items. S-17 is a motion to approve the retirement of Michael Negri as high school custodian, effective September 4, 2014. S-18 is a motion to accept the resignation of Brian Potozak as part-time custodian, effective August 15, 2014. S-19 is a motion to approve the retirement of Julie Zekely as speech-language specialist, effective January 31, 2015. S-20 is a motion to approve the lunch aids at the stipend set forth therein, and their names are contained in that item. S-21 is a motion to retroactively approve Chris Failey as school psychologist to conduct five child study team testing sessions at the amount not to exceed $1,130. S-22 is a motion to accept a gift from the Cedar Grove High School Alumni Association on behalf of the class of 1964 regarding the Arnie Berg Press Box, which we spoke about in our last meeting. S-23 is a motion to accept a gift from the 2014 Project Graduation Committee in the amount of $475 to purchase additional receptacle bins for Cedar Grove High School. S-24 is a motion to approve district-wide improvement panels for the 2014-2015 school year as set forth therein. S-25 is a motion to authorize the attendance at those programs that are set forth in S-25. S-26 is a motion to approve the leave of absences that are set forth in that item. S-27 is a motion to approve the substitutes that are set forth in S-27 at the rate set forth therein. S-28 is a motion to approve the following near substitutes for the 2014-2015 school year as set forth therein. S-29 is a motion to approve Christina Rigerio, high school cross-country volunteer coach for the upcoming school year. S-30, as we discussed, is something that just came about today. We have the resignation of Mary Ehid, our principal at the Memorial Middle School, effective August 31, 2014. S-31 is a motion to approve the students set forth therein for classroom observation. S-32 is a motion to approve the revised job description for the 12-month computer tech position, and the board has the copy of that job description. S-33 is a motion to approve the job description for the 12-month senior network technician position. S-34 is a motion to approve the job description for the position of Intervention Specialist. S-35 is a motion to approve the retirement of Joseph McBride, Cedar Grove High School administrator, effective November 30, 2014. And finally, S-36 is a motion to approve Nicholas Decourt as interim principal for the Memorial Middle School, effective September 1, 2014 until January 31, 2015, or further action by the board. May I have a motion for those items?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just one item. In light of the S-30, we're going to want to remove Mary's name from S-24.
I believe we discussed that at our next meeting, there'll be a motion to rescind --
Okay.
-- any of her functions. Yeah, any of her functions, once she's --
Accepted.
Yeah, once her term ends, which will be August 31.
Okay.
Our next meeting, we'll have an agenda item to remove anything that she has been approved.
That she was part of.
So we'll approve that tonight, and then it'll be rescinded the next one.
At the next one. Got it. Okay.
Yeah, sure. Absolutely.
Take this opportunity to extend a few thank yous here. You've noticed that we've got some retirements, some resignations. I'd be remiss if I didn't say thank you to Julie Zekely for her work as a speech and language specialist. She'll be retiring, as you heard, in January 2015. Thank you, Julie, for your contributions to our district. Mike Negri as well, high school custodian at the moment. Thank you, Mike, for your contributions. He'll be retiring as well. Certainly, I want to say thank you to Mary Ehid for her time. She joined us in December of last year and made an honest effort to integrate herself here in Cedar Grove. And, you know, for personal reasons, she's taken a different position. I want to wish Mary well, and at the same time, we're excited to welcome Nick Decourt as the interim principal of Memorial Middle School. We have confidence in what Nick brings to the table. He's well-liked. He's a smart guy. We look forward to his contributions. And lastly, I'd like to tip my cap to a good friend of mine, Joe McBride, who has done everything here in the district for a lot of years. What I'd like to do is read his official retirement letter, and I think you all agree that Joe's a good man, and, you know, they're hard to find sometimes. So, "Dear Mr. Fetterman, please accept this correspondence as my official and final letter of resignation." There's been some stops and starts along the way for Joe's retirement. "To be effective on November 30, 2014. I have spent over a quarter of a century in the Cedar Grove School District. I have taught on every grade level and in every school, and for more than a decade, I have served as an administrator in CGHS. I am very proud to have served the Cedar Grove Schools. It has been a very rewarding career for me personally and professionally." Joe continues, "I wish I could personally thank all of the board members, superintendents, and administrators that gave me so many opportunities to thrive in the Grove. I am leaving with very mixed emotions, as I am about to start another new chapter in my story. I am also leaving knowing that the district in general and Cedar Grove High School in particular are in very good hands and will soon be profiting from the guidance that you, my fellow administrators, the faculties, and staff of all the schools offer our children. Go Panthers. Sincerely, Joe McBride." Thank you.
And we certainly wish Mr. McBride the best in his retirement, and we welcome what he's going to bring to us for the next couple of months before he leaves. And I also just want to make one comment. The resignation of Mrs. Ehid took us all by surprise today, but I'm happy to say, as surprising as that was, that we have a very good person who's going to step in, and he has been in that school. He knows that school. He's going to, it's going to be a seamless transition. Mr. Decourt is very well aware of all the students, and the students are very well aware of Mr. Decourt, and it's just good that we have such a good Plan B, at least for the time being, until we find out what the next step for our principal is going to be in the middle school. That being said, any other discussion?
No, I think he's going to be great, and next week is going to be great with him welcoming everybody, and like you said, it's going to be seamless.
Good. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mr. Secala?
Yes.
Very dramatic.
Under curriculum, may I have a motion for S-37, which is a motion to approve Nick Molina to rewrite the curriculum for college math for the 2014-2015 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mr. Secala?
Yes. Under contracts, may I have a motion for S-38, which is a motion to approve the contracts that are listed in the agenda for the 2014-2015 school year for special education students. S-39 is a motion to approve the agreement with the Essex County Regional Services Commission for the 2014-2015 school year to coordinate and monitor the non-public technology initiative program. S-40 is a motion to approve the subscription busing contract with the parent of the student number therein at the amount therein for the 2014-2015 school year. S-41 is a motion to approve the subscription busing contract with the parent of the student number therein in the amount set forth therein for this upcoming school year. And S-42 is a motion to approve the subscription busing contract with the parent of the student that's set forth in that item for the amount set forth in that item for the school year upcoming. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mr. Sicala?
Yes.
Very dramatic.
Under curriculum, may I have a motion for S37, which is a motion to approve Nick Molina to rewrite the curriculum for college math for the 2014-2015 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mr. Sicala?
Yes. Under contracts, may I have a motion for S38, which is a motion to approve the contracts that are listed in the agenda for the 2014-2015 school year for special education students. S39 is a motion to approve the agreement with the Essex County Regional Services Commission for the 2014-2015 school year to coordinate and monitor the Non-Public Technology Initiative Program. S40 is a motion to approve the subscription busing contract with the parent of the student numbered therein, at the amount therein, for the 2014-2015 school year. S41 is a motion to approve the subscription busing contract with the parent of the student number therein, in the amount of, set forth therein, for this upcoming school year. And S42 is a motion to approve the subscription busing contract with the parent of the student that's set forth in that item, for the amount set forth in that item at, for the school year upcoming. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mr. Sicala?
Yes, this meeting is adjourned.